Recording and let's start the meeting. We are. Alright, we're running. Okay, we're running. They're dispersed. Ready?
Okay, let's call this meeting to order. This is Elver County Planning Commission, it is February 6th, time is 7:03. If we could all please stand, we're gonna do a prayer. My pledge. I'll do my best at the prayer. Dear Jesus, what I ask for is that everybody has wants and needs and everybody has concerns and issues going on. I ask that you listen here and maybe help all those in question. I ask that everyone be safe and ask for peace in here in the country in any way possible. So through that, I ask this group, Jesus our Lord. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, good. Roll call, please.
Danny Wilcox. Kevin Kirkwood.
Here.
Van Sands.
Here.
Eric Carlson. Eric Carlson. Absent. Mike Buck. Mike Buck. Absent. DeeDee Shaw Price.
Right here.
Robert Politik. Robert Politik. Absent. John Gresham.
Here.
Chair, that concludes it.
Thank you. Do you have a form? Five. Thank you. Alright, staff report, I believe. Mark.
Yeah, just one item, thank you Mr. Chair. Hi everyone, I'm Mark DeRico, Director of Community and Economic Development for Elver County Governments. Just one update for you, the planning commission on Wednesday, January 24th, the Board of County Commissioners approved a case that you reviewed. Prior to that, it was the Sterling Crossing, also known as a war of the service plans for the Metro District, those two. And that was approved by the OCC. And that concludes my brief report, thank you.
Mark, thank you. Okay. Consent agenda, we usually don't have something.
So can we check the sound? Apparently it's not working. Not broadcasting. Is your mic on?
Let's see. I have the mics on and the test. And let me backdrop. Alright, we'll do the setup test, I will turn my volume all the way up. And Mark, if you could speak into that and do a test.
Test. This is a test for audio.
And it is not coming back into my computer. Alright, sorry about that. Let's test it. Okay. We're meeting on microphone screen on top left. Video preview. Video preview. You want speakers?
It's on mute, so we do have to tune in here. Would that make a difference? Probably not.
Yeah, I have, we'll check our audio, turn the microphone and talk test into it. So is it coming out of your computer when you did the test?
Not our, whose computer?
Mark, are you somehow hearing it?
Oh, I muted Mark's computer.
Okay, and mine is on full, so we should have volume. Let me see, I don't know why we aren't. Set this fine.
I just turned your volume off because I didn't want the feedback, you know?
Um, why are you like, chances?
As long as we have the recording.
Yes, we have the recording.
We're not required, it's a courtesy, but I don't see why we don't have the audio.
So I agree.
We'll have to proceed.
That's what I'm asking. So can we have on the record that we're not required to broadcast this and that the recording we have in front of us will suffice?
Very good.
Alright, so where were we? We read consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, no items, thank you.
Okay. This next section has to do with citizen comments. Now this is unrelated to any application that we're hearing tonight because you all have a chance to participate in the in the applications that are presented. So again, this is unrelated to anything we're hearing tonight. Seeing out there. Okay, then B. Consider this as citizen comment, this is Danny Wilcox. Fifty-three seventy-two, Timber Ridge Drive, Elizabeth, Colorado. This is as a question to the board. Okay, has there been any consideration of any countywide metro district considering water and the monitoring of water presented to the board?
Are you looking to need any district chair?
If you could get a kind of a, just kind of note that comment and I say here hoping that it may get to the board and I might receive some feedback on as if that has been presented to them. So that's as a question.
Okay, thank you Mr. Chair, do a little.
If I don't hear nothing?
Have a bullet comment for the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay, if I hear nothing, I will handle it in a different way.
Could you repeat the question?
Um, no, no. It's on record.
Okay.
Alright, so next in the, did we have any other comment? Okay. Um, next one is, and I will get with you after the meeting and state your voice. Next one is approval of meeting minutes. So I believe we have December 5th minute. Did we review them? Did you? I did too.
Make motion that we approve the minutes from December 5th.
Okay, you have a second?
I'll send her.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You were not present?
Not present.
Okay, thank you Kevin. Alright, so we have nothing else to approve there. We are entering into the public hearing process. So let me go over a few things and then we'll start into our hearing. First of all, we are a volunteer group, we're quasi judicial board. That means that we judge the applications in front of us based on the codes and ordinances that are present in the in the county. That's our job to look at outcomes in both three ways. One, we can vote to approve, we can vote to deny, or we can vote to approve with considerations with what's the word I'm looking for? Fame? Amendments?
Conditions.
Mark?
Conditions.
Conditions, thank you. Okay, so when we vote, I want to make it clear that our vote only means it is a consideration. It is not the board has the ultimate approval. So what we're doing is we're forwarding our suggestion to the board. We have no authority to change anything, to make changes in rules or anything else. We're strictly an advisory board. So our hearing start with staff presentation. They present the application, then we'll ask the applicant to present their side. Then we will go to public comment, which usually considers questions. After that, we'll close that out, then we'll go back to the applicant and staff to see if we can rebut some of the questions, answer some of the questions, what happened. After that's completed, we close that out, then it becomes a board discussion, then we vote. So at this point, I believe our first one is Barkin Barn S U R, number twenty-three dash three-nine-eight-four. And we'll start with our county presentation.
Alright, thank you Commissioner. Good evening, everyone, my name is Danny Klavanner, I'm the land use planner here for Elver County and the Community and Economic Development Department in Elver County. I'll be presenting the Barkin Barn S U R case, S U R dash two-three-dash-three-nine-eight-four. This presentation is about a special use by review for a dog boarding and kennel business on an eleven-point-three acre property zoning agriculture residential. Um, the action here will be for a special use area that's approximately point-six-three acres and to again establish a dog boarding and kennel business. The location of this property is thirty-nine eight-four-one Swift Creek Circle in Elizabeth, Colorado, eight-zero-one-zero-seven. Uh, so this process began back in April for the applicant C.C. Garza with a pre-application meeting. There was a community meeting held in May, um, which no one attended except for the applicant. And the applicant, the application was officially submitted October 3rd. And here we are, February 6th, 2024, for the planning commission meeting. Um, one important note, all noticing, met Elver County zoning regulations fourteen-day advance notice with uh, quarter-mile, quarter-mile radius mailing in January of the eighteenth, onsite signposting on the twenty-second of January, and also mail, uh, newspaper, ranchland news. Uh, here is the location of the property, it's south of County Road one-sixty-six and east of County Road thirteen. It's about five miles from Elizabeth to the north and it, one important note, it's in a more populated area of the county, uh, just miles from other large subdivisions like Independence, Thunderhill, Deer Creek Ranches, and Spring Valley Ranch. Here's a look at the zoning map of the property, the subject property is outlined there in green. Um, to the north, you have a mobile home residential zone, um, with approximately five acre lots. And there is a seven acre lot just to the north of the applicant. Um, that is cross diamond acre subdivision. To the south and east, there's agricultural lands with a two-hundred-twenty-seven acre parcel and flood plain. And to the west, there's residential, uh, with other agricultural residential zoning and eleven acre parcel with the residence. Here's an aerial map of the property and it can be seen here in this view from the west. It is accessed by Swift Creek Circle, which is a private road. The existing zoning and land use is agriculture residential and residential land use. The proposed zoning will not change. Um, a special use will be added to allow the dog boarding and kennel business. Again, the property is accessed, uh, through a private road and the driveway would be extended. Here are some details on the proposed use. So this will be a commercial dog kennel and will be open year-round. The days will be Monday through Sunday. Hours approximately seven-to-seven Monday through Friday, seven AM to five PM on Saturday, and nine-to-five on Sunday. This is for picking up and dropping off the dogs. Uh, there are approximately five employees with the family members constituting the main members. And two people will be onsite to manage the dogs during business hours. There will be approximately twenty kennels and there will be an employee bathroom in the Barkin Barn with a small washroom. Here's a, a brief overview of the site plan, I'll show this in more detail in the next slide, but this is their S U R exhibit. Um, on the left, you can see the, uh, proposed, uh, structure with parking there above the property and it will have, uh, several parking spots with one accessible spot. Uh, some setback notes, um, it'll be eighty-four feet from the side, uh, property boundary and about a hundred-and-ten feet from the front. Uh, we received referral responses from all these agencies and I'll just highlight a few important referral comments. So Elizabeth Fire Protection District wants signage for the Barkin Barn at the driveway entrance and they have to turn out for a barn. Uh, building review, the applicant will have to submit building plans to Elizabeth Fire Protection District at the time of building permit and at that time, impact fees for the fire protection district will be assessed. And the final comment from Elizabeth Fire was there should not be a retail store with this S U R. With the Colorado Division of Water Resources, uh, an important note is that the well cannot be used for commercially use for a dog kennel or dog boarding facility. So, uh, one important change that the applicant had to make was to come up with a bulk water purchasing agreement. And to that, the Colorado Division of Water Resources said the intentions of the water use are clear and it appears foothills water is willing to provide water, so I do not have any issue, uh, showing how the applicant will legally provide water for their commercial uses. And finally, from the Colorado Department of Agriculture, pet and animal care facilities, uh, the applicant will be required to be licensed under the state's Pet, Animal Care and Facilities Act, PACFA, as a boarding and training facility and comply with all of the sections, uh, in Colorado state statutes. And the applicant will get that, uh, license after the special use approval. So our planning staff evaluation here, uh, this special use review by review is appropriate for a kennel boarding, breeding, and training more than ten animal units land use, which require an S U R in agricultural residential zones. The location near two main roads in Elver County is positioned well to serve dog owners. And then others in northwest Elver County, Barkin Barn will need to purchase water for the animals and will not be allowed to use their residential well to serve the dogs. And Barkin Barn will need to receive this license from Colorado's Pet, Animal Care Facilities Act before opening. So in Elver County, we have eight criteria, A through H for all special use by review uh, applications and the planning commission is to consider these criteria in a review of application. A, whether the use is in harmony and compatible with the surrounding area and neighborhood. This special use by review to add a dog boarding business is in harmony and compatible with the neighborhood. The larger lot context of the neighborhood with a mixture of agricultural and residential uses blends well with this proposed kennel. The nearest residents to Barkin Barn will be over five-hundred feet away. There will be a small fenced-in play area for the dogs to minimize any potential noise to the neighbors and limit dogs' movement on the property. B, whether this use will not have an undue burden on available infrastructure. Barkin Barn will be accessed from a private driveway from Swift Creek Circle, which is a private road that currently serves the existing residences. Elver County Road and Bridge do not have any concern with the addition of this business and the adjacent county road is not anticipated to be burdened by this proposal. C, whether the use will not unduly increase traffic congestion or burden the existing road system. Elver County Public Works Department reviewed the application materials and had no objections. DeeDee, whether the use will not cause significant air, odor, water, noise, or light pollution. The uses proposed are not believed to cause any significant forms of pollution and all waste will be removed uh, through the residence waste provider. E, whether all sanitation requirements will be met. Elver County Public Health Department reviewed the application and the applicant provided up-to-date information on their seating system. F, whether the use will be adequately landscaped, buffered, and screened. The proposed structure will fit into the context of this area, will appear like many of the existing accessory buildings in the area. The dog play area will also be behind the new structure and fence to keep the dogs, uh, from moving about the property. And finally, G and H, whether the use will not otherwise be detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of the present or future inhabitants of Elver County. Uh, this use should not be detrimental to Elver County residents, dog boarding and kennel, kennels are valuable services uh, to the community, this business will support residents with dogs and contribute an important service to the community. And finally, H, whether supplemental standards are met for specific uses as political. Animal care supplemental standards are met for this application. If approved, the applicant will be required to receive their license from Colorado Pet, Animal Care Facilities Act. So our findings in the Elver County Planning Department is to recommend to the planning commission, uh, to recommend approval for the Barkin Barn special use by review, case number S U dash two-three-dash-three-nine-eight-four. And this recommendation is subject to a few conditions. Uh, one, applicant will be required to remove the hearing sign within seven days of the decision by the Board of County Commissioners. Two, the special use by review shall not become effective until all fees are paid, conditions of approval are met, and the exhibit is recorded. Recreation of all appropriated documents is to occur within a hundred-and-eighty days of the Board of County Commissioners approval. The structure must be permitted by the Building and Fire Departments. Impact fees must be paid before the issuance of a building permit. And finally, the last two, applicant must retain records and receipts of bulk water purchases. Uh, this is from the DWR, and applicant must be licensed through PACFA prior to opening. Uh, that concludes my presentation on Barkin Barn, thank you. Uh, again, case S U R dash two-three-dash-three-nine-eight-four.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, our applicant, C.C. Wilcox, Garza? Please, do you have anything?
No, he did a great job.
Okay, you have anything to add? Nothing?
I really don't, other than we're, our anticipated time.
Okay, you have? Could you?
Yeah. We're hoping to open by fall of twenty-four.
Okay.
And that is best.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this application? Okay, then, we're on board. Questions?
So I've got a couple of questions, can, can you come up with four? Can you turn on your mic? It's probably not.
Correct. There you go.
So, um, I have a couple of questions. One, did the fire department request a turnaround or is that something that's, that's, uh, considered part of the fee for the fire department?
Don't remember, I, we just built our house recently and we have a turnaround, so I don't know if they are.
So in their plan review, I believe they found there was adequate room in that part of the lot to turn around, so they said that was okay, they needed showing on the diagram.
Fair enough. Uh, second question, sanitation associated with the kennels. I, I know that's, you know, typically when you're cleaning up kennels and you've got X number of dogs there, you're cleaning out with water spots, basically just washing down the, the area. If you're having to purchase that, how are you positioning the water so that you can actually have the kind of pressure you need to, to clean out those areas?
So the, one else that told us that, how they would do it with the hoses, I don't know specifically, they, they are aware of what we're doing. So they said part-time, they deliver the tanks, we're, we're just a tank and now have hoses.
Okay, and then the sanitation part comes in to the next level, um, is this is going to be fed down into your, um, existing, um, what's the word, I don't think, septic, thank you. Septic.
I think we'll have a separate septic.
Oh, separate septic complete?
Yes.
Okay, so, and then?
Talk about them.
And then water tied into the building itself, is that from the well or is that from the water supply?
Everything from the water supply.
Fantastic, thank you.
Okay. Is that it?
Pam?
For me.
Alright, now, okay. Did the fire department place an addition on this that they couldn't have the apartment?
The fire department said there should be no retail store in a, in the Barkin Barn.
So where did, uh, is that under the fire department's permit?
That, that, I, in, in a way, because I think it depends on occupants of the building, if there's going to be people uh, in this, in the, you know, building looking for retail and, you know. I, I believe that was a condition that they put on as part of their review, that they didn't want retail in there.
To my knowledge, I don't think the fire department determines property use. I would just.
Maybe, yeah, with, with occupants in there, I think that's what they were concerned about.
Property use is determined by the owner of the property and by CDS if it complies with the law. The fire department has a, looks at it as far as fire protection for that property, whatever use it is. So I mean, just, just a thought there, I heard that, that was kind of concerning because I was hoping the fire department didn't apply a condition that if they put retail on, they wouldn't approve this and that's... I understand that that did not occur.
I think the fire department, uh, there, there is, right now, in this S U R, there are no plans for retail. Um, and that would have to be part of the plan, so there are no plans for retail.
Okay, alright. Thank you. Kate? Go ahead, please.
Okay. Make a motion that we approve S R twenty-three-three-nine-eight-four Barkin Barn, um, facility and, uh, send it off to be approved by the county commissioner. Anything else on it? No?
We can approve it. Recommend it for?
That's what I said, I said. I did say recommend it.
Could you turn your mic on, please? Thank you.
And do that whole?
We have got a motion to recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners for Barkin Barn S U R twenty-three-three-nine-eight-four. And that came from Dee. Thank you. Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Do we need a roll call vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, on to the next one. My understanding is we've got a remote presentation, correct Mark? So we will turn that over to Mark, so you can set that up. Thank you.
I can be concerned. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Mr. Chair, thank you very much. Mark DeRiere, Director of Community and Economic Development again. And we have our staff contract planner, Sandra Hoffman, from Logan Simpson, who will be presenting in a remote fashion this evening. And I will turn it over to Sandra for the Core Electric Cooperative Minor Ten Forty-One, which is the first of two cases, uh, tonight that Sandra will be presenting. Sandy?
Great. Good evening. Hopefully you can hear me. Please let me know if you can't. Uh, I'm Sandra Hoffman. As Mark mentioned, I'm the planner, viewer, helping Elbert County. So good evening, Chairman and planning commission members. Um, this will be a review of the Core Minor Ten Forty-One System Improvement Project, and the case number is ten forty-one dash twenty-twenty-three dash zero-one-seven-four. This will be to obtain that minor ten forty-one permit, and the location of it, uh, of a five-point-seven mile overhead line with two substations is along County Road one-seventy-four between Kaioa Bennett Road and County Road twenty-one.
Pardon me, Sandra, would you please share your screen?
Oh, sorry, I missed that.
Thank you.
I thought I was, but let me, uh, get back out of here. And we will first... Okay, try... Okay, and I'm gonna start this in a second here. Slide show from beginning. Come on. There. Can you see it now?
Not yet. Take your time.
Hmm. Okay, it says, okay, share. Now, I might start it from the beginning. Can you see it now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, sorry, I apologize. So the framework, the cover slide is the overall Core Minor Ten Forty-One with the case number on it. And the next one is the description of it being the Core Special, um, System Improvement Project. And the length of it and size of it is five-point-seven miles overhead line with two substations. And it's located along County Road one-seventy-four between Kaioa Bennett Road and County Road twenty-one. As there are multiple landowners along there, applicant Core Electric Cooperative worked with them to get their buy-in and to make sure they were aware of the project. And the pre-application meeting was held on April twentieth of twenty-twenty-three. The Core submitted a minor ten forty-one application in September of twenty-three. And because we're sporting documents, pretty intense the amount of time we had, um, we did a completeness check. We found a few things that needed to be worked on. They resubmitted and they finally got a completeness check done on November of twenty-three. And the referrals started in December and moved on until now. We're, we're moving forward with the public hearing part of it. The public notifications were completed by then with branch line news and the mailings that needed to be done by, um, December twenty-eighth. And the onsite posting was done December twenty-seventh. So all of the notification requirements were met. This is going to be three, the vicinity map. I just thought it might be very helpful to kind of see some different images of it. This is the one that has an aerial, and it shows you the two substations, Spring Valley Substation and Outback Substation, and the, on yellow. And then the purple line shows you the overhead power lines. Then this is another view of the same thing, a little bit closer view, but it, it shows you a little bit more of the development. It's a little more visible in the screen. And the third vicinity map has colors in there, and the colors are different developments. So you can see, um, where there is existing development and also proposed developments, where the more said developments will be, uh, proposed. And so you can see the, the information on that. And this one also has a little bit larger vicinity map. So in relation to Denver and Elbert County, it just puts up where the project location is. The existing land uses around there are agricultural, minimum thirty-five acres, some agricultural residential, and, uh, planning and development, as I mentioned. The, the development around it includes the Spring Valley Ranch Development, Some Country Meadows, and then, of course, the proposed more said TUD side, which is where, uh, one of the substations is going to be proposed to be located within that mixed-use development, if it moves forward. This is a, a shot of the Spring Valley Substation exhibit. You kind of see around the perimeter is fencing and then interior is, is access to it and, um, how they're going to be laying Outback Substation. And this is a visual of her head looking down at the Outback Substation. And this one will be adjacent to the Kaioa Britson or Transmission Line. It's just out of County Road one-seventy-four, and it's on an approximate ten-acre park. So that's just zoned agricultural. So referrals, there's a list of all the referrals on the screen. All comments that were provided have been addressed, and most of the people that got the referrals had no objections or no comments for the proposed project. The review criteria for the Core Minor Ten Forty-One Permit meets the vision and goals of the Elbert County Comprehensive Plan and also meets, uh, the criteria that are in the zoning regulations. And I'll go through those right now through a variety of slides. So the concrete has some plans. It meets that land use, uh, vision and goal where, uh, for RG five, the county should require that public land dedications include adequate access, water, sewer, and utilities to serve the intended use. The Core will, uh, project, will, system project will be, ensure there's adequate power for development. It has, it meets EN one, which is the natural resource one, which again provides the public utility to be designed so that it's respectful to the environment. It is following along County Road one-seventy-four where it's already disturbed. There's some already, some overhead power lines in there. So they're going to be minimizing the amount of impacts to open space within Elbert County. Another comprehensive plan goal is EN two, which is development to minimize negative impact to agricultural land and designated open space. Again, as a follow line along the existing county road, it's going to be minimizing the amount of disturbance. And the location of the substation is in place so that its connectivity will work for their system and minimize the amount of disturbance. Wildlife, that's W L three, they should evaluate the proposed development, um, impacts to wildlife and habitat and migratory patterns. And all of that was addressed with the Colorado Parks and Wildlife Review. They addressed all the concerns that were there, and Colorado Parks and Wildlife supported this proposed project. For EN one, the county should encourage energy conservation and energy efficient design and renewable energy. So again, the Core Minor Ten Forty-One Project is going to be providing that reliable power to residents and businesses, ensuring that that doesn't have a break in service for any of them. The goal for EG six, the county should support the development of agricultural, commerce, industry, education, healthcare, and so on. Again, because of the growth that's happening in the county, there is a need to provide reliable electricity for all the existing and future businesses and residents. So this project will achieve that. Within the review criteria of the zoning regulation, there's some general approval criteria that is included. And when you got the S A report, it went into a lot of detail regarding how they were addressed. There's forty different documents they provided that addressed the criteria. And so I'm not going to go through all of that tonight, but I will just kind of walk through some of the, the higher viewpoints of that. And so first is the documentation that prior to this, like disturbance, um, the applicant, or get all the property rights and right-of-way easements. The Core has shown here, there's a bill that they have done, that does say effort to reach out to the impacted property owners in proximity to the project, and they did all the notification requirements that were required. B is that the project protects water quality and supply. Again, this is an overhead power line and two substations. There's no impact with the, the water quality or supply. It's also not, um, create a significant risk from natural hazards, and the project will not be doing that. Uh, and it's that the project is in general conformity with the applicable master plan. The Core Ten Forty-One Project will be in conformity with the applicable master plan. E is the project will not have significant adverse effect on the capability of local government to provide services and, and this sort of delivery system. Again, the Core project is critical to provide the power that is necessary for the area to ensure there's no breaks in power and issues with that. F is the planning, design, and operation and decommissioning of the project or reflect sustainability, resource conservation, energy efficiency, and so on. And through the documents that they provided, that has been met. G, the proposed will not specifically degrade the environment. Again, there is information in all of the different documents that show how they are going to try to be, uh, minimal impacts to the environment and addressing and saving as much of a natural vegetation as possible. H is the proposed project will not negatively impact the high-fairy habitats and, uh, as defined by Colorado Parks and Wildlife. And as mentioned before, they were working closely with the Colorado Parks and Wildlife, and Colorado Parks and Wildlife, um, weighed in on whether this was a minor ten forty-one permit, and they agreed with the director that it was. And they also agreed that this project met their conditions that they wanted to have to address any concerns that they had. Elbert County also has some, um, other criteria continuing. So the proposed project will not cause a nuisance as defined in the Elbert County Land Use Development Code. Through the documents provided, it will not be creating a nuisance following along an existing county road. Also, it will not degrade areas of paleontop, palimpsest, paleontological, historic, or archaeological importance. And that was shown through the information that was provided to that was met. And it's a proposed project assisted areas within the county. It's going to meet the community development and population demands of the area. And certainly what Core has shown is that their current system needs to have this additional improvement done so that they can ensure reliable power to those that currently live there and for future residents and businesses. There's some minor criteria, um, that also need to be met, and that includes the, the last one is that the L. Proposed project will not result in unreasonable risk of hazardous materials. And it talks about one and two, where it's compliance with federal state handling and storage and avoiding, um, you know, waste. And so, uh, the Core Ten Forty-One Permit will not be creating any kind of, um, um, hazardous storage materials or used or wasted, anything of that nature. So those conditions have been met as well. So also within the Elbert County zoning regulations, there's Appendix A. And these are concerns that can be considered by the planning commission as they're making their recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners. And it's also to be used by the Board of County Commissioners to, to make their determination. So it first has general considerations, and there's quite a few of these to be honest, um, that it's technical and financially capable. There's some subcategories in this that are included in your staff report. They can look to a lot more detail about how they can be evaluated. But Core is, uh, assured with the documents they have that they're financially viable and able to complete the project. It has, um, to look at the, those natural hazards that might occur. As mentioned earlier, the top team has verified that that is not going to be of a concern, and those concerns, um, have been addressed if there are any effects on the capability of local government to provide services. Again, Core will be helping provide the electric power to those existing and future residents and businesses. Um, the effects from the financial burden, uh, burden on the existing and future residents, there shouldn't be any burden on the existing or future residents for the project that's being proposed and for the ten forty-one permit. And the substantial effect on local economy, it, it's going to be helping the economy because it will help support growth of business in the area. The recreational activities in experience are not going to be impacted. Again, they're following along an existing county road. And the same for recreational activities not currently found in the county. They're not going to be impacting any opportunity for other recreational activities to come into the county. In fact, they may support it if the power is needed for that type of use. Then there's environmental considerations, um, changes in the ambient air quality, visibility, microclimate. And again, the Core Ten Forty-One Permit, due to improvements, will not be creating any issues with air quality or visibility or microclimate. Changes to the ground cover vegetation, waterfall streams. Again, they have been very, um, diligent in looking and making sure through all their documents that they're being very sustainable and conserving, conserving whatever they can with existing vegetation and topography. Same for surface water quality, groundwater, wetlands, or period areas. They will be crossing over some floodplain area, but again, they, they've addressed those concerns. And these are for the overhead power line only. To be able to go the distance they need to go to cover the area between the substations. And more for this would be the aquatic life, loss of oxygen, plant life, soils, geological conditions, um, housing materials. Again, uh, all their documents reflect that they've addressed any concerns that might occur if there are anything existing, and they, their proposed project itself is not creating any issues with any of these items. So the staff recommended the planning commission find the following. The proposed Minor Ten Forty-One Application is in general conformity with the Elbert County Comprehensive Plan. The Minor Ten Forty-One meets all the criteria for approval in the Elbert County zoning regulations. It is, uh, Ten Forty-One is generally compatible with the existing and allowable land uses in the surrounding area. And the proposed Ten Forty-One will not result in significant impact to health, safety, welfare of the residents and landowners in the surrounding area. So the planning department, um, recommends the planning commission recommend approval for the Core Minor Ten Forty-One Permit, System Improvement Project, case number ten forty-one dash twenty-twenty-three dash zero-one-seven-four. And there are five conditions that staff recommends. First, the applicant will be required to move the public hearing sign within seven days of the Board of County Commissioners' hearing. The Minor Ten Twenty-One Permit will not be affected until all fees are paid and the, and the resolution reported. The special use by review, which you'll be hearing next, needs to be approved. And if it's not approved, then this condition will not be met. Uh, but that would need to be approved by the Board of County Commissioners and recorded, because that's another level of, of requirement that they need to do for this project. The fourth one is that the county, um, applicants are required in the county of national security, such as a bond or a vocal letter of credit, used adequate for the county for, um, the entire duration of lifespan of the facility. This is per a regulation. And the filing would need to be within 180 days of the Board of County Commissioners' decision. And the fifth one is the applicant must submit formal application to Elbert County for a site development plan and a minor plan for each of the two, just the substations, Outback and Spring Valley, within 180 days, which is six months, of the Board of County Commissioners' decision. That, uh, condition actually is something that came out of the variance that they got approved already, um, for the Board of Adjustments, because they needed a variance because they're within a quarter mile of existing development. So that had a stipulation that required a site plan and a, a minor plan. And so this would just support, again, that stipulation that they have already with the variance that they have approved. That's all that I have. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Representative from the board, the applicant. Please, can I, don't, your name, don't point your name, I'm sorry.
Oh, Brooke Hines, um, representing for.
I'm Sandra Hoffman.
Sandra, this is Mark. Uh, the applicant is now setting up, uh, their computer for their presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. HDMI, right? I have to switch. I have to switch.
Is it going to be a few minutes or is it going to be?
I think it's going to be.
Can I go into room PC?
Okay.
I don't know. Sorry.
She's HDMI. Okay, so we should be HDMI. We should be good. All right, we'll see in a second. I'm on the screen, but she's not on the screen.
Mr. Chair, we can have a brief recess, see the technologies.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. Thanks, Mark. We're recessed for about five minutes. How's that? Okay. Okay, we're good.
Okay, so she should be on the HDMI. And you can get cable here. Okay, so HDMI.
Sometimes it helps to unplug and plug back in.
Yeah, let's try that, because I did switch to projector to room PC, so it's HDMI.
So it's empty.
Oh, that was probably, great. Thank you. Okay, very good. Very good. Very good. So let's go back to the panel here, HDMI.
We'll test it going back to me now. You want to test that?
Sure. Let me go ahead and go back to projector and go barcode. So we'll click share. And I'm back. So let's go back to the HDMI.
And that's perfect, so it's easy.
Projector, we're good?
Yeah.
That was fast.
Thank you.
Just need her.
She should be, she should be.
She's trying to get on the screen.
We should be seeing it because she's plugged in, so we should see what she's, she's seen. Is there something else? There we go.
And I have a pause. And I have it. Do you know what? I leave it on that, and I'll just restart her real quick.
Sounds great.
Thank you all for being here. I know this is a quasi-volunteer, and so we appreciate your time tonight.
I'm sorry.
Did you, did you have something? I'm Brooke Hines. I represent, I work for McDonald's. I'm representing Core tonight. I'm a project manager for this permitting effort and a senior wildlife biologist. So like I said, appreciate your time for tonight, and we'll get started. So I'm here to present on the Elbert County System Improvement Project under 1041 application. So Core is a nonprofit cooperative serving 11 Colorado counties with 175,000 member homes and 300,000 total members. This makes Core the largest rural electric cooperative in Colorado. Core's territory covers 5,000 square miles and serves the northwest portion of Elbert County. The Elbert County System Improvement Project consists of a new double-circuit 115-kilovolt transmission line and two new substations, Spring Valley and Outback. The transmission line is approximately 5.7 miles long and 75-foot right-of-way and will interconnect with existing Core Kiowa Brook Center 115-kilovolt line. As you can see outlined there, the Kiowa Brook Center line is the yellow dashed line. Pulp heights for the project will range between 80 and 115 feet in height, with average spans between the poles of 400 to 500 feet. And there's representative diagrams of both deadened structures and tangent structures. The current loading with existing substations is at risk. Ideally, Core can operate each of its substations at half of their available capacity. In the event a substation needs to be shut down for maintenance, the load can be transferred to another substation in the area so that service to Core's members continues uninterrupted. However, the three Core substations, Homestead, Elizabeth, and Kiowa, in the vicinity of the project are each currently operating at over 50% of their available capacity due to increasing demand from existing members as well as new development in the area that's connecting to Core's existing system. The substations operating at over 50% capacity create reliability issue for existing Core members in the area. Core's existing infrastructure cannot meet the demands of the proposed and recent development in the loading areas. The project is located in an area that is expected to experience the greatest degree of population growth and development in the county, according to the November 22 Elbert County Housing Needs Assessment. Without additional electricity that would be provided by the project, only a small percentage of needed units can be accommodated. The project will improve overall distribution service in the area, provide additional capacity and reduce outages, and accommodate current and anticipated growth and development in the area. The Elbert County Comprehensive Plan acknowledges this emerging community pattern, stating it is expected that the majority of the western population or portion of the county will continue to experience further subdivision of lands as population growth continues to shift more people from the Denver metro. The Elbert County System Improvement Project is proposed within an area as illustrated in the Elbert County Comprehensive Plan projected growth pressures map that is expected to experience the greatest degree of population growth and development in the county. Additional electrical infrastructure is needed to support this development. The project will ship loading from the overloaded substations increasing reliability. The Spring Valley Substation will provide electricity for distribution feeders to existing developments including Elkhorn Ranch, Sun Country Meadows, Spring Valley, Tannum Ranches, and Miller Ranch, as well as the proposed Morstead and EC West developments. The Outback Substation will ship loading from the Kiowa Substation and provide power to the ECE East development. Core completed a routing and site study for multiple substation sites and four routes. The Spring Valley Substation location was based on accommodation from the Morstead development. However, this accommodation was limited to deciding, deciding the substation within one of the three areas designated for commercial mixed use, which collectively accounted for only 9% of the proposed subdivision. Elbert County staff requested that substation should not be placed at intersections and limiting two of the commercial mixed-use areas. Elbert County staff also requested that the substation be sited on the north end of the property to allow potential future commercial development to the south along the proposed extension of County Road 174. Transmission line route sighting included four alternatives. All were partially located within a quarter mile of the existing Spring Valley subdivision. Three were partially located within a quarter mile of the Sun Country Meadows subdivision. Alternatives that avoided, the alternative that avoided routing within a quarter mile of Sun Country Meadows was eliminated as it resulted in more difficult engineering and additional easements and cross craft agencies made entrance into EC West along County Road 29. A variance for this was approved August 2023. Here's a timeline showing the different stages at where the project has progressed. Core presented at a September 2021 Board of County Commissioners meeting to introduce the project and study area to various preliminary substation locations and routes, and to discuss citing the spring, and the Spring Valley Substation and the, sorry, citing the Spring Valley Substation in the Deer Valley, also known as Morstead Development. Core presented at a second BOCC meeting in June 2022 to introduce the project again, introduce the revised study area, varied substation and route locations, and to discuss the Spring Valley Substation sighting within the Deer Valley-Morstead Development. Core has set up a project website and has held two open houses, one in October 22 and March 23. Core has also had multiple briefings with developers and local groups such as the Elbert County Environmental Alliance. In August 2022, as I mentioned earlier, the Elbert County Board of Jesters approved a variance for the project. Public hearing noticing for the project was meant through man or to landowners, newspaper announcement, and signed postings in the project area. I think Sandra done a really good job of going through the general approval criteria, and so I won't go through each one of those, but the green checkmarks indicate that we And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll ask for public comment. Do we have anybody out there? You're all part of the.
We're all together.
Okay. Okay, that makes it easy. All right. Okay, so what we'll do, let's go around the board, because in this situation, even though they're both kind of considering the same thing, we need to vote on each one individually. So we will hear this one, vote, and then go to the next. So, questions?
Well, when Sandra was on, she said that everybody had approved the, had signed off and everything, and.
Jesus, speaking of.
Page 85, page 85 tells us that it's not true that they're asking.
Pardon me, Chair, I need the microphone on, please.
Yes, or.
Closer.
Closer, I guess, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you.
Much closer.
Okay.
Closer.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Page 85, it says that they're asking for waiving of the five to nine, or whatever, four to nine people. I'll have to get back to that page. But is that something we often do? Is that procedurally okay? We're supposed to have 10 people in the area, and it evidently states, so on page 85, they're asking for a waiver to the.
Sandra, are you able to hear that question?
Sure, Chair. And yes, and planning commission members. When the application came in from Core, they explained in there that they would like to have a waiver because they did the good faith effort to reach out to all of the property owners, so the nine owners, and they were unable to reach some of them, and it was after time, multiple times. With that in mind, they asked if they could please move forward. I took their request to the director, and the director reviewed it and decided that they did try with a best faith effort to reach out to these donors. In addition to that part of it, though, that was just getting them moving forward. They have done all the public notification requirements per code with, you know, quarter mile or a half mile for the slide that I had. So they've noticed everybody within 1,320 feet through the ranch land news and mailing and the posting on the property. And so there's opportunity for everybody to provide feedback. I'm not sure any other staff with Elbert County had any feedback, but I might not be able to see within the audience tonight, but they did move forward and do all of the notification requirements for the code.
Okay, I just wanted to know that. And then, you know, I just had a concern as to whether we were, you know, not getting everybody's way in. And this says that we have a projected 50,000 people. We had a projected 50,000 people, and when we did the water, it stated that Elbert County had a projection of 35,000. So which is it?
I can speak to that. This is Mark, Deputy Director of Community and Economic Development. So I believe that 50,000 figure is referring to a previous study. The more current figure on population that we're working off right now comes from the state demographer's office, and that is around that 36,000 by 2050. But those are just projections, and we like to stick with what's coming from the state.
Right.
The other thing, Mark, I think, based on the initial data we received, and I don't remember what was the reason, but the demographer adjusted those projections downward recently, I believe. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, and after 2030, things flattened out. So according to the state mayor's office, Elbert County is one of the faster-growing counties in the state by percent of population increase, but then after 2030, it levels off.
I remember what it was for is when we went out and did the comprehensive plan somewhere around, and we got the data, and it had these projections. That's.
Okay, so we're going to work with the.
So you work.
Right, at this point?
Yes, that is correct. State demographers off those projections.
All right, and so Core is not working with the 50,000, they're working with the 35,000? 36,000, one for you?
Yes.
All right. That's all I got, Mark.
Pardon me, Chair. When you talk about the right-of-way, 75 feet, when you get adjacent to the other lines, are they not in that right-of-way, or is it going to become underbuild, or?
The, there's a distribution line on the north side of 174, and this is going to be on the south side of 174. So, yeah. And it will be set back enough to, for anticipation of widening of 174.
Just had a couple of questions. You have a document centered in there that was from the engineering firm. It had a lot of comments and draft components. Was that a finalized document, or was it truly a draft?
In the, in the supplemental, or?
In the supplemental. It's got comments throughout the entire document, and some of them were corrections, some of them were ways to point out, you know, different ways to say something akin to that statement. So it all looked like draft comments. It wasn't finalized, it was, I'm asking.
Chairman, and planning commission members, may I comment on that?
Oh, please do.
So what we included in the packet, what I included in the packet is the actual, I sent a referral out, and when we did it, first we did a completeness check. So you probably saw, there was 40 different documents, there was a spreadsheet and all stuff, that I had the environmental department of Locust Simpson, I had biologists and environmental planners looking through it, and they were providing feedback. And that's why, for this case.
And that's why, for this case, they didn't have to do a completeness check at first because we provided a lot of feedback to them before it was deemed to be complete and everything addressed. So what was included in the packet is the markup that you're going to see through that review, as well as the referrals that did go out, and people gave comments, and how they're addressed. And I think it was noted, I think it was the Kiowa Environmental Group, that there was one where they had comments, and towards the end of January, the Core had addressed all of those comments related to weed management and, you know, those types of things. So what you probably are looking at are the comments that came in that Core addressed.
Yeah, it's kind of hard for me to find a package of 876 pages. So I'll get back to you on the exact section, but I noticed you put up poles. Are these a little netting poles, or are these replacement for different existing infrastructure, or are you going to use existing poles?
This is a new transmission line.
Complete new transmission line.
Yes.
Okay. Fantastic. Okay. That's the only questions I have for the moment.
It's on, and it's on the opposite side of the road, right?
Yeah, it's on the south side of 174, in the distribution line.
The other line is on the course, sir.
Correct, yes.
Actually, one last question. Did you consider varying lines? I know you're crossing two flood areas, flood zones, but did you consider varying lines?
Not as far as our signing of having study, we did not.
Cost? I got others.
That was my question is, is there a significant cost difference in overhead as comparing?
Yes, there is. Yeah, it's very significant. And maintenance of underground lines is also an issue.
Yes, is also an issue. And then environmental issues too, correct?
Yeah, there's at least one pretty significant flood plain that we're spanning, so there would be, you know, issues looking underneath that as well.
Okay. Van, sorry. I'm bad. Okay, and I'm excellent. So, right? Vote?
One last question. You have a question? In the middle section, in the presentation, Sandra, it showed a consideration for renewable energy. Is any of this actually renewable energy, or is it, you know, all existing power structure?
This is Sandra. I think that was just part of the overall policy that our goal rather vision, that's in the comprehensive plan, and so there was other elements in there about providing the energy that was needed. So I would have to defer to Core whether any of this is going to be from any renewable energy source.
Good evening. Bruce Kaufman with Core Electric Corporation has answered that question. So the transmission is actually considered for existing members, but we do have a way that we have a Pioneer Substation and also Victor Substation from Bennett that has renewables that is going to be going through the system. So it's a way for us to push those renewables through our transmission line, and also, also the other developments that we have renewables at the Sundance, that was proposed, probably about eight, 10 years ago, or a Kiowa Substation gives us a way to bring those renewables on our system. So it doesn't mean that that's...
Do wind towers in any way feed this system?
It does not.
Says not?
Not directly.
Okay. I was wondering if you...
That's your Excel system.
Okay. 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 Okay.
I just want to ask one thing. Did we reach out to the couple that was just adamant about it not going across their property? Did we talk to them about...
This is a different line.
It's in here.
This is a way, a different one. I think you're talking about the couple that are giving with the Excel one.
Right.
There was a mention of it.
No, it's not there.
There was a mention of a proposal.
Okay.
But I think, I think they went silent.
Yeah, they went silent because they were upset about it. They didn't think there was any way around it, but I don't know, I just would like to think that we at least trying to give everybody in the county, you know, a little thought process, because...
Yeah, and I believe that couple's name is Younglin?
Yeah.
Good.
Yes, we have been working with them on the easement. They are getting on board, we have made some stipulations on the easement, and what we're going to do, allow them for future development if they want to do anything on their property, so accommodate some setbacks, also one of their concerns is they have to do the bidding that we're there.
Right.
And what we're going to do, their construction, expense that area off so that it doesn't affect their cattle, and then we turn the property back to its existing condition. And we're only going to have one pole on the property versus what we proposed on the Core route, so we were looking at anywhere from six to 10 poles. So we changed the way the design was, tried to accommodate, we couldn't miss them, but we tried to do as best we could and impact by the...
And that's beautiful. That's just beautiful. That's what I was concerned about, and I'm so glad to hear that we at least, you know, acknowledged that they had an issue and acknowledged their, you know, beef and, yeah.
All right, we did everything we could.
All right, good.
Wasn't your variance also to help based on public input?
Yes, it was.
Yeah.
So if you're working with them now, that's great.
Yeah, and we were actually hands-on with each of the landowners. I mean, we challenged them over Colorado State Land Order, General Shell, property and also the Moorestead, which is going through a lot of problems, and acres and stuff already in that too. But a lot of people that are on board with this project, they see the benefits, especially with the development coming on. And also kind of proof, one of the Younglin's, one of the questions was, how's it going to benefit them directly? And one of the questions was, now how are we going to make that better for them? It's that substation that we're going to have close to, they'll actually be the one of the first people that are offered that substation. So it'll prove this, we're about facilities for regulars.
Thank you so much for that. That's great you got that on the record. Thank you.
Okay.
Go, boss.
Have a vote.
He can...
Do I need to do this again? Do you want me to do it? I...
If I can remember the numbers.
Yeah.
It's minor 1041, 2023, yeah, 0174. I recommend approval for that minor, recommend. I said recommend approval.
Yeah.
And...
And you got the numbers right?
I think I got the numbers right.
Yeah, you did. Kevin, you did?
I'll second that.
Okay. So we need to, do we need to roll call vote?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
No.
Okay. Thank you. I think you guys are present for the next one.
I think so.
Okay, that's the S U R. So if we could, I think it is Mark, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're just getting a switch back over for the staff report here, and Sandra, if you are ready to share your screen and present the next agenda item, which will be the Core
Evening, Chairman and planning commission members. Please let me know if you can see this screen and that you can hear me. Is it, is it being shared right now that you're able to see it?
Yes.
All right, perfect, great. All right, well, good evening again, and this is the special use by review, case number S U 2023 0174. And again, it's similar to what you already had, we'll through some of the first slides fairly quickly because they're duplicative of what you saw with the 1041 slideshow. So hybrid seven miles, two substations, the Lutz County Road, multiple landowners, they had the pre-application meeting at the same time for this special use by review at the same time as the 1041. Obviously, they're on the same planning commission date. They did all the notification requirements at the same time for both of them, they met all the notification requirements. The facility map, I'll just show you the one that shows you the colors of all the surrounding existing and proposed developments. The existing building and land uses are, again, the same from what you have the previous presentation, predominantly agricultural with some PUD, and approximately just some existing development that are in the area. This is the Spring Valley Substation exhibit again, and then the Outback Substation exhibit. So all comments that were provided, we're interested when it went out for the referral, there was no objections, and most had no objections and no comments. So the list of those that were sent referrals is listed on the slide. We're going to go through some criteria for a special use review for what was, for the Elbert County Comprehensive Plan, as well as zoning regulations. So first, again, all of the repetitive ones, again, for the comprehensive plan, RD5, which is land use, you know, public land dedication for adequate utilities, so it meets that. Same for, including utilities to be designed to be respectful of the environment, which is the net. The new development should minimize negative impact to agricultural lands and old space, again, that in the wildlife, evaluate the proposal and making sure they don't impact them or minimize impacts, was met. The same for what we had previously with the encouraging energy conservation and energy efficient design and providing, again, reliable energy in the area. And EG6 is supporting commerce, industry, education, healthcare, and other tourism and so on, and residential growth by providing this reliable energy through special use by review proposal. And then when we go to Elbert County, zoning regulations, there's an approval criteria, as you already had, there's eight of them. When you had your first case tonight, they went through those for them. For that case, and we're not the same case, same conditions or approval criteria here. The use is in harmony and compatible with the surrounding area. It is the next, since the transmission line will pretty much follow County Road 174. Spring Valley Substation is going to be within the future Moorestead mixed-use project, it's going to be blended in with that. The use B will not have undue burden on available infrastructure. Again, the transmission line and two substations are needed to provide reliable power, so they meet that condition. The C will be the use will not unduly increase traffic or congestion. And so the transmission line and two substations really aren't going to be creating a traffic issue, and Core has created a traffic control plan that's going to be used during construction. So then, again, they're going to minimize the impact for vehicles going through the area as they're doing their construction projects, so they thought ahead to that. D, the use will not cause significant air odor, water, noise, light pollution. And again, this is a transmission line and two substations, so they will not be contributing to those concerns. E, the sanitation requirements will be met. Again, the overhead power lines and substations won't be creating any sanitation, infrastructure issues. The use of the adequately landscaped, upgraded screen. The substations do have something around them, and so they, they're trying to address that concern that way. The use will not otherwise be detrimental to health, safety, or welfare to the inhabitants present in the future. And again, the project that Core is doing will be providing reliable power to the current and future residents of the businesses. And then supplemental standards are met for specific uses. And this is where they were supposed to be within, not within a quarter mile, and this is where they got their variance approval. And so the variance Resolution 23-38, and their case number was P 20230045, was done, so that addressed that supplemental standard requirement. So staff recommends that the planning commissions find the following. The proposed special use review application is in general performance with the Elbert County Comprehensive Plan. The special use by review meets all the criteria for approval in the Elbert County zoning regulations. Special use by review is generally compatible with the existing and allowable land uses in the surrounding area, and the proposed special use by review will not result in significant impact to the health, safety, and welfare of residents and landowners in the surrounding area. So the planning department recommends, the planning commissions recommend approval for the Core special use by review, case S U 2023-0174. There are four conditions that have been identified that you can consider that staff are recommending. The applicant will be required to remove the public hearing sign within seven days after the Board of County Commissioners hearing. The special use by review must commence within two years of the Board of County Commissioners' approval. The special use by review permit must be reviewed annually by the City and Economic Development Department for the first four years of construction and operation to verify compliance with stipulations and co-re requirements. And the fourth one is the applicant shall file with the county a financial security, such as a bond and irrevocable letter, similar to what was in the minor Core conditions of approval as well. With that at the head, I'd like to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other presentation on this S U R?
I do. It's very, it's very similar to the line you stood for the 1041.
That's what I was kind of wondering.
So...
Okay.
And Sandra did a great job, so, but I've got it keyed up, and it is very similar, except for the approval criteria, which she did a really good job of explaining, so, yeah.
Okay. Do I ask everybody? Do we go through the, the same thing, or do you, can you show us the specific differences? Can you highlight the differences between what you initially presented and the S U R?
It would be the approval criteria. Yes, yeah.
Are you guys good with going through the approval criteria, or do we need to see the, you tell me.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just ask the applicant if you have a presentation. We have it ready to go on the technology side, so plug that in and take it away. Thank you.
So this is for the Elbert County System Improvement Project, Special Use by Review. Brooke Hines with Burns &amp; McDonald. So I will, the first few slides are very similar to what we saw before, so I will do the highlights. Core is a nonprofit cooperative, serves the Colorado counties, 11 of Colorado counties, and covers the northwest portion of Elbert County. As Sandra stated, the project is co-located with 174, with substations at either end of the 5.7 mile transmission line. The poles will be about 115 and height, 80 to 115 in height, with spans of 400 to 500 feet. There's a significant issue with current loading in the area that Core is hoping to address with this project. As you can see with the gap there and the substations that are over 50% capacity in the area, and the new transmission line and substations will help to offset that loading and provide additional power for existing and future development. Timeline is very similar. Both of these have run concurrently, so as Sandra mentioned, we've presented the pre-application meeting, the Special Use by Review and the 1041. And here's the outline that follows along with all this. We have a website, which I mentioned earlier, and we've held two open houses in October 2022 and March 23. We've had multiple briefings with developers and the Elbert County Environmental Alliance. And to earlier questions, we've met with all landowners and have had conversations. All landowners are in the process of securing easements with all landowners. As Sandra mentioned, the special use by review criteria, we've met all of those. And on the transmission lines, you'll see the V up there for the variance that was applied to those, which was approved in August of 2023. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Questions?
This is really dumb questions, forgive me, but I'm going to ask it anyway. The two substations on either end, you own property for that. I noticed you called this out, it's 640 acres total, so roughly a square mile of owned property, is that a pole?
What it'll actually be is, we have two parcels that were, the Alpax, 10 acres, Spring Valley will be seven and a half acres, over yet the easements in there. Yeah, because it's 5.7 miles of, 75 feet wide, so I hope that helps out.
Yeah, it does. So I'm assuming that the two land elements on either end are the owned sections, or basically have been donated by Spring Valley or...
Actually, we just, those are right.
Did you get, okay. And so when you put these properties in, the access, I know that there's a turnaround, I think was requested by the fire department, so I know that that piece is done. Are you going to pave the entryway into the subst... piece is done. Are you going to pave the entryway into the substations?
Only the first section for what the access permit requires. Most of the time we try to keep it throughout, but the others are going to get our listed substation economy or 13.
You're still waiting for that one, by the way. I get dragged by that all the time going.
Well, it's good, but you have to. A little tough right now. So probably the early spring. Yeah, it's one of our requirements due to road and bridge that we have to put an apron in there.
And so you're going to give him for one of the substations?
We'll be doing both.
Not both?
We'll do it for both. The one for Spring Valley will be right at County Road 29, right there. And the rest of that is all access road back to the substation. And then when we do Outback in a future day, we'll have that at that time too.
Okay, perfect. Okay. So in the variance you receive, how far are you actually away from the subdivision? It's just the transmission lines, I'm assuming?
It was both of them, the transmission and the substation. That one was more critical was the Spring Valley Substation. And I'd say that the substation that pushed back, we're probably still within a quarter mile, but probably more like maybe, maybe 1,200 feet from the nearest subdivision, not the house. So we're far away from the house. And the transmission's probably within 800 feet of the subdivision.
Thanks. Those are my questions. Appreciate it.
Man. Okay. You guys have to go before the P U C and get this all approved.
We do not have to go through.
You don't have to go through P U C?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So question is, we're, we're handling these, we're, is it in our code that all these have to go through an S U R?
It depends. It's on a case by case basis, but due to the infrastructure and substations, S U R would be required.
Okay, okay. I just, the question is, I, because it's, it, it sounds like it's so close to almost be used by right, everybody needs help. Okay. And that's what this is for. And I'm kind of, I kind of was wondering why we route this some through S U Rs and some not, specifically with 1041 projects. So I, I didn't know what the criteria was. That was a question of your staff. So anyway, maybe. Because with the 1041 comes annual inspections. And they're also under the guidelines that that, that S U R can be revoked.
Yeah, the S U R has staff ability to, you know, to check on the, you know, facility or, you know, the entity itself. Also, there's a complaint director and a mechanism that relates to that as well. But generally, like in our raise, it says that the county will look at S U Rs for the first four years on an annual basis. And then, you know, thereafter, it's typically, again, if, if we have something that comes from the public and then we're required to investigate.
Okay. Thank you, man. All right.
Those are my questions. I have.
Okay. We have a vote.
So I recommend we approve with conditions the S U R 2023-0174.
Second by Didi. Okay. Do we need a roll call vote? Or just?
Go ahead.
On paper?
All right.
All right. Okay. Thank you, folks. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
We make the motion that we adjourn.
Okay.
A second?
Don't move. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Have a good evening.
Thank you. You too, all. Thank you very much.